No.
Make your drink look like it's iced tea. No. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the city council meeting on this May 19, 2020. We will start by calling this meeting to order and making sure that we have a form today. So as I look out into the field of pictures, we've got a full form. So welcome everybody to today's meeting. We will start with a prayer from, and I think Marcela and Gary Jenkins are here to offer us the prayer this morning, so you're on.
Good morning, everyone. Will you bow your heads as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your being many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our calling for substance and for friendship. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governor authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembly council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern within the conflicting interests and issues of our times, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of San Angelo. It is in your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
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 Thank you very much. We will move into three special instructions. All members of the public council and staff should begin speaking by stating their full name and SMD address, their SMD position or role within the city. We will start off with offering public comment, and I am going to read the one public comment that we received from Don Wellen of SMD5. He says the following. I am scared. I was at a chain lumber store, which was Home Depot on Saturday, and there were over 300 people in that store. Not 100, but 300. Almost all were without masks. Clearly, half of those there were not participating in social distancing. It was a very dangerous breeding ground for seniors, children, teens, employees, and everyone. I called 211. However, that is the state number for state assistance programs and other. I called 911. A nice police officer responded and said he would talk to the manager. However, because of how the system works, he could do little more. In other words, there's no means for compliance. He asked, is that correct? No means for law enforcement. You may think that I am a namby-pamby reactionary, but have you been to places where there are more than 100 cars in the parking lot? I have. Just walk through. Employees setting bad examples by conversing in tight-knit groups of three or four, less than two feet apart, and more, 10% wearing masks. People openly coughing out without covering their face. Buyers leaning over counter towards cashiers and not behind the plexiglass, passing by each other at shoulder distance. No hand sanitizer available and programmed for wiping down common services even more. No one corrects violations, and everyone is in a cooped-up, people-dense environment. These people endanger the health of everyone. A lot can be helped if those who shop were required to wear a mask for the 25 minutes they are in a store. If you do not believe me, consult the CDC guidelines. The people who I saw have not earned the right to endanger you, me, and all those around them because they are irritated by a face cover. You are reopening city offices. Great. However, why would you endanger our city clerks by allowing unmasked people to enter the building? What kind of sense does that make? Can't you respect them like HEB does with their clerks? What type of example do you set? By doing nothing, you only make people fear shopping, fear the idea of reopening. When someone does not comply with water restrictions, there is a set standard for compliance and a phone number to call, and then the law is enforced. Concerning this virus, if there is no law, then pass a declaration. You are the city council. Continue to act for the benefit of everyone in San Angelo. Celebrate when employees test all their employees. Sorry. Celebrate when employers test their employees. Congratulate Intertell and the Health Foundation as well as Principal LAD when they distribute free masks. Compliment Lee Wright Dennis for excellent protocol for sacred opening. Applaud the good fellow folks for providing free and unrestricted testing. SAISD for computer teaching and more. Please require masks. Establish a clear enforcement regimen. Get out into the community and really see what's going on. Sincerely, Don Wellen of SMD5. I would like to offer the following, and that is, I repeat again to the citizens, and I say, remember, COVID-19 has not left this community. It is still here. It is around you. It is still in existence. And I say to those businesses who have opened up, many people are concerned that if we don't live by the rules, that these businesses will have to be closed. And I tell you that two businesses have been closed because their employees tested positive. So after having opened up for just a short couple of days, they now had to be, they had to close again for 14 days. So your employees are out there. They are in the community, and they can be exposed. So it is up to each and every one of us to make sure people understand the rules are in effect, the COVID-19 is still out there, and each of us need to make sure that we do what we can to continue to protect this city, the citizens, our friends, our neighbors, and our family. Billy, I think you wanted to offer some words this morning and public comment. You are muted, Billy. You're still muted. You're good.
Okay. Sorry about that. Billy Dewitt, Single Member District 6. And I just wanted to say, dear mayor, to what you were saying about us being careful when we go out in the community and wherever possible, we need to wear our mask. But my comment for public comment, I know all of us get a lot of calls with different issues going on, but one of the calls that I value an awful lot was from a gentleman in my district, and he was very complimentary of the city employees, all the city employees. He said, San Angelo is a great place because of the great employees that we have. And he said, we need to do everything we can to try to keep our good employees. And I think he may have been referring to the comment about, you know, how we're going to have to manage the budget. And I just want to give a shout out because that was one of the few positive telephone calls I got, and it was very complimentary of the city employees. So Daniel, I know that you're head of all of that, and I just want you to say, I just want to say to you that I appreciate the leadership you provide, and I want to give a shout out to all of our city employees. I went through the line to get a mask the other day, and it was hot, and people were press firing, but they had just a happy cheerful smile on their face. And I know we have employees across the city that are working very hard to ensure that San Angelo stays the great place that we've always known it is, that we love. And I think a lot of that is due to the staff that we have that support the city, that, you know, the people when there's a water main break that are out there in all knee-deep water and mud, in the heat and in the cold. So I just wanted to share that comment, and I know that the resident that called me watches faithfully, and I want him to know that I am, you know, really appreciative of him taking the time to give me a call and let me know he appreciates our city workforce. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I also want to add a couple of comments based off of Governor Abbott's public meeting on Monday. And for the first time in his executive order, he was very specific about the fines that could be put on a business for disrespecting his proclamation. So for those people who believe that there's no fine and no risk to not respecting his executive order, I remind you and tell everyone that he has specifically said, there will be a $1,000 fine on any business who chooses not to respect his executive order. A $1,000 fine, just to be sure everybody understands that number. Next, I know that we have received many phone calls and emails in regards to property taxes and the fear that property taxes are going to go up. I want to remind everyone, the city is not responsible for determining the property tax values. That is Tom Grand County Appraisal District, and that most of the property tax dollar amounts were established by January 1 of 2020, prior to this COVID-19 issue. So the city is not responsible for determining the value of the property, only the tax rate. Do I have any other public comments at this point? Uh, Daniel Donzuela would like to speak.
Billy, thank you so much for your comments and relating that information from the individual that they contact you. I am very proud of the work that our city staff is doing. I have seen a lot of them really step up. A lot of people don't realize that a lot of our city staff continue working to provide the service to our community, and I think they have done it in a very, in a manner that, quite frankly, as I mentioned a while, I'm so proud of. So thank you, Billy, for mentioning that. I'll make sure that all the city staff just get that information, that appreciation that you actually relate to. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Daniel.
All right, we will move into the consent agenda. Do I have, are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to have pulled? With none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Every time, a Single Member District 3, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Billy Dewitt, Single Member District 6, I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with no public comment. We will take a vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
The motion has passed approving the consent agenda. We will now move into the regular agenda. We will start with item A, discussion and direction related to hotel occupancy tax revenue and obligations of the fund. Tina, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. Mayor, we wanted to bring this item to you as the council today to discuss the hotel occupancy tax and what we're expecting for the current year as well as next year. Our main goal here is to get direction on how to handle any shortfalls for the current year as well as how to plan and project for next fiscal year for the budget. We'll see on this first slide, let me minimize. On this first slide, we're showing you the current budget, which is about $2.2 million in tax receipts as well as $56,000 in interest income. We will see some shortfalls in the current year. We're projecting a 50% year-over-year reduction for the remaining months of the current year, and that's loosely based on the percent decrease that we're seeing in actual occupancy levels in the hotels. That will yield a $200,000 shortfall in the current year of almost 10%.
Tina, may I offer a comment on that at this moment? I want everyone to also understand that even though we are projecting a 50% decrease in our hotel tax, one of the other issues with that is many of the people staying in the hotels right now are staying more than 30 days, which means there is no hotel tax, tax on people who stay more than 30 consecutive days in the hotel. So even though we might have 50%, we're not getting hotel tax dollars on those hotel rooms. Also, we understand that even though we are projecting 50% decrease in our hotel. Tina, we're not hearing you at this moment?
That wasn't me, Mayor, speaking. I thought somebody else might have been speaking.
Did anybody else want to offer a comment? Okay, it was feedback. So you're, right now, we look like we're going to have a 9.5% deficit to budget on hotel tax.
Yes, ma'am, and we're hoping that's a conservative estimate, but of course, we're watching that monthly to see how it changes, and we'll need to figure out how we want to, you know, recover from that shortfall for the current year. Are we ready for the next slide?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So this is showing what we're projecting next year. This is based on a 38% year-over-year reduction for the first six months of the year, and then a 25% year-over-year reduction for the last six months of next fiscal year. This is based on discussions, of course, with Diane Bays from the CBB. She monitors the occupancy levels regularly, and so 38% is what we're expecting to see, and that would yield a decrease of 20% for the entire fiscal year as far as hotel tax receipts at about $18 million for next year's budget. That is a decrease of almost $460,000. And so, of course, we'll need to find ways to either reduce expenditures or possibly dip into fund balance. We'll have to have that discussion and decide how we want to move forward for next year's budget. This slide is showing you our original and amended budgets for FY '20, and of course, the contractual obligations that we already have with all of our different partners. The Cultural Affairs Council is still currently on a 5% of tax receipts, and that $83,000 for next year based on our projections, but of course, that could change if we leave them at a 5% basis. We have had discussions in the past of moving them to a flat dollar amount, just like all of our other partners, and so we could get direction on that today as well, moving forward. We will be bringing that contract back because it does expire September 30 of the current year. And we wanted to show you the fund balances, just to show you how what, how our projections might impact fund balance. There is enough money in the hotel tax fund balance to absorb any shortfalls that we are currently projecting, but of course, it would, as you see, was down below. This 474 is our goal as far as the fund balance in that fund, and if we did absorb it through fund balance, we would dip below where we want to be in that fund. And my final slide here is just kind of showing you some options that we have. Obviously, we can reduce expenditures. We can draw down fund balance. And of course, as we move into next year, if we see hotel tax receipts improving and maybe we don't see the shortfall we're projecting, then we can address and return spending to the previous levels. So that's all I have. I know that all of our partners should be on the line and on the call as well. I will mention that our two biggest partners, of course, are the CBB and Civic Events. I know that Diane and Carl White and Sid Walker have all been working on those budgets and trying to cut where they can. I know they're prepared to speak to that as well. So if you would like to ask any questions of them, they are available on the call.
Okay. Thank you, Tina. Do we have any comments from Carl White on the update?
I'm sorry, update?
Any comments?
No, we're, we've, uh, we've, we've had to cut our budget because we anticipate less revenue next year due to projected less rentals. So we've already cut our target expense budget for next year, but we are able to cut more if we have to.
Okay. Diane Bays?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We do have a different look for our budget for the remainder of this year, and I think I'll share my screen with you so you can see what that looks like. Hopefully, you can all see that. Sorry, gotta adjust some things. This is our current budget of 2020 is $1,012,500. And what I am proposing to the city council is that we look at, for the remainder of the year, our staff are going to be crunching the numbers to see if we can do approximately a 20% savings for the remainder of the year. Most of that savings is going to be from the marketing and advertising areas. So you're going to see, these numbers will all be adjusted, or most of them will be adjusted because a lot of activities are not happening. So we're not doing a lot of travel. Training will be cut, and some of our marketing budget, but not, not a lot of it because we have a lot of that contracted already, but we want to ensure that we're spending our monies wisely and not forcing some spends that we don't need to do currently. As I said, a lot of meetings and other events that we had on our budgets are not happening this year, so we believe we can save a minimum of $200,000 for this year. And what we are proposing is that money that we save for this year that was already in our budget would be transferred over to 2021 because we're projecting a 24.39% decrease in our hotel motel tax receipts for 2021. As the council hopefully remembers, we started a January-December budget last year, and so we are looking at the, what Tina shared, 38% decrease in hot tax, January through March, 25% April through September, and then we're, we're going to go ahead and be conservative with October through December of next year with a 10% decrease, just to show that, that we're, we're looking at that because we don't know what those numbers are. This has been a really challenging time, and so as stewards of the public funds, we felt like if we could save money this year and then appropriate it for next year, that is what we're requesting of this council, and so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Diane, I want to, first of all, say thank you for your forward thinking and understanding the market and what's going on and being very willing to relook at your budget and understand that the hotel tax dollars will be down. There's a need to be conservative, and there's a need not to spend money that won't generate any positive increases in terms of hotel stays. So you're relooking at your marketing dollars, your overall picture, and being forward-thinking in terms of saying, I'm gonna, I'm gonna relook at my budget. Here's what I think I need to present to you. Here's what I don't need for right now, but I'm probably gonna need it next year and passing it forward. So compliments to you for that analysis and for your willingness to work with us to reevaluate these numbers. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, if, if I could, this is Rick Wise. I just wanted to add, in addition to what Diane said, which is all super, likewise, Civic Events has been doing the same thing when it comes to the current year. So you'll see that we're not having the overtime for events. We're not using part-time staff that we would have used. So in that case, you will also see those types of savings this year. Travel's not happening, all those kind of things. So likewise, you'll see the similar things that Diane is doing over at Civic Events with their spending reduced in those areas where this year, hopefully, it will start to generate some savings as well.
Thank you, Rick. Very much appreciated, and I thank you all for relooking at that and understanding the situation and reacting accordingly. So thank you, Rick. Thank you, Carl, for that, both of you. All right, let's see, next on, maybe Jamie, are you on? Oh, wait a minute. Who has a question? Billy, do you? I'm sorry.
Um, yes, ma'am. I think this question is probably for Daniel. I know we're talking about hot monies now, but will there be some direction across the board for all of the directors to look at their budgets and see where they can reduce, you know, their budget and maybe not buy that, you know, capital piece of equipment, you know, or something like that? Will that be happening, Daniel?
It's already, it's already happening at this point. We have already taken measures to cut our expenditures for this fiscal year. Of course, I talked about the hiring freeze earlier. We, we've done others, of course. We're cutting back quite a bit of the expenditures because we're not doing any more traveling as far as training. We're doing a lot of that now online. So there's a lot that we're looking at, not just on this fiscal year, but next fiscal year as well. My goal is always to make sure that at the end of the fiscal year, we're always in the black. That's something that we've consistently done, and that's something we'll make sure that we do this fiscal year and next fiscal year as well. So yes, ma'am, we are taking measures to ensure that we are in the black at the end of this year and next year as well.
You know, when Daniel and I, when we meet, talk about the following things. Number one, we don't want infrastructure projects to be impacted negatively. We want to keep reinvesting back into our infrastructure, whether it's streets, street maintenance, water. Those things are very important to the citizens of this city, so we don't want to impact those. We also want to make sure, in fact, that we continue with approving new construction, remodeling, et cetera, because again, we're going to need to build up the property tax base, keep adding to this city. So we want to make sure that we are efficient and we're passing those so that we have a positive benefit in that area. But saying that, we'll go back to the hot tax, and we can continue to talk about the other things in, in the big city picture, but right now, let's try to be as focused on hot tax if we could.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Billy. Do I have, before I move on to Jamie, do I have any further questions or comments for Diane, for Rick, or for Carl? Okay, then, Jamie, do you have any questions, comments? Jamie, I think you need to unmute. There you go. Good morning.
Good morning. And no, ma'am, thank you. Mostly, I'm here in case people had questions of me, but Cultural Affairs certainly understands the need to move from a percentage to a dollar amount. We feel that that's wise in keeping with what the city is doing across the board, and we, we are ready to do that, and we'll certainly look forward to knowing more about how that will come about.
I'm a big believer in planning conservatively and helping we overachieve what we think is out there. So any, anything we can do to bring positive to the conversation, I'm excited about. So thank you, Jamie. Do?
Yes.
Anyone have questions for Jamie? All right, do I have questions for SAIPAC? I think Larry, you're on. Do you want to offer any comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, thank you for spending time with and sharing the information. We are planning for that flat rate across the board for the next coming years, and, and it's going to be a tough year for us with no performances, and that significantly cuts into our net income, but we are, we are budgeting around that, and we're just going to move forward. We're going to hope for the best and plan for the worst, I guess, is the best way to look at it, so.
It's the best way to say it, Larry. I think that's all we can do right now. There's so many undos, as we all realize. Does anyone have questions for Larry for SAIPAC? All right, let's see, we have Dale Velazquez on for downtown. Dale, would you unmute? If you can. You're trying. He's trying. There you go.
Got it. All right, thank you all. Actually, we think we're in good shape as far as what we've accomplished fiscally in our fundraising efforts. We, I do want to announce that we just recently met our goal of raising $140,000 to put historic street lamps between recently met our goal of raising $140,000 to put historic street lamps between Cohen Heine and Concha, excuse me, Randolph, which is going to lead up to our gateway. So we just, we just received the last piece of funding for that. And so we're excited about getting that done. I think from a hot tax perspective, I think we probably overachieved, I hope to say that confidently, that we're overachieving in terms of what we receive from city funds in terms of results that we provide each and every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dale? I want to thank each of you for being available this morning. What each and every one of you with your organizations brings to the table is really important. And I want you to know that we know that. And so thank you for that. We also have Bob from Fort Concho on this morning, I think. He's down there somewhere.
Bob is on the line. Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Okay. Any comments?
How can I serve you?
Well, I think what I would most like to understand is how is the renovations, how are we doing on the renovations on Fort Concho?
We are doing very well. The roofers are pretty much finished. Barracks five and six and mess halls and restrooms. They are on their last offices quarters and a second crew has started on the headquarters building. Commissary and quartermaster will follow. I expect they will be fully completed in maybe a month or two, just in time to get out of the hail season. The chapel and offices, chapel is finished on exterior renovations. Offices quarter six is about halfway through. And city architect Al Torres is working on a couple of companies for a major quote to cover all of the other buildings for which we have exterior repairs. If we get lucky, we could knock this off before the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have a comment or question for Bob? Oh, just a minute. Daniel would like to add comment.
Actually, I don't have a question for Bob. If somebody else does have another comment I can make.
Okay. Okay. Well, wait a minute. All right. Thank you, Bob. And now we have.
You're welcome.
Yes. Thank you. Brent Casey, you're on. Unmute, please. There you go. How are you today?
I'm great, Mayor. How are you?
Good. Update us.
Well, my area is basically getting things into the complex. But as far as what we're on right now, I mean, we're working to get every tournament that we possibly can out there for the rest of this year and next year when we're released to do so. But as far as things that are going on for the complex and everything like that, most of it belongs to parks and not recreation as far as things like that. But I think the complex is actually on the, the, the next item, if I'm not mistaken, but.
Yes, you are. You are. So we'll just wait and get into further detail on item B on the regular agenda. But thank you for being here.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do we need a motion team on this? Or is it just discussion? It's just, all right. So I think, yes, Daniel.
Mayor, before we go on, last year, the San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts with Tower Kater, they're doing a wonderful job. I know they have international visitors and multiple visitors to our community, did approach last year to discuss about funding for the museum. I kind of pushed it off to this year, which unfortunately, this year is when all this is going on with COVID-19. But I just thought it'd be unfair for me not to mention the fact that they could definitely use some additional funding. I know that this, I'm putting it up right now, knowing that we're trying to do cutbacks, but I just really feel that it'd be unfair for me not to, not to bring it up. Since they came up last year, and the discussion was we could bring it up this year. And again, we're having this situation, but I just want to make sure that we, if anything, maybe open it for discussion, but at least to have some type of consideration for this coming fiscal year for the San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts as well.
All right. So that will be part of our discussion as we move forward into our 21 budget. With that, team, I think that you have heard from each and every one about what they're doing, have the potential to do. I don't believe that we can negatively impact any of the organizations for the balance of this year who have the $50,000 or less in their budget because we're already into May. So it's pretty hard to impact their budget if it hasn't already been spent. For Cultural Affairs Group, we'll continue to look at what that 5% is relative to and adjust accordingly. And then I thank both Civic Events Group and the Convention and Business Bureau for your thoughtfulness and being fully aware of the budget issues that are attached to this year's budget. So thank you to each and every person for being there.
Mayor.
Yes. Is that Billy?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I can't see your face, so I'm looking.
Oh, I don't know why. I'm not up?
No.
Yes.
Okay.
Hold on, listen. Now you're up, Billy.
Oh, okay. I have a question for Brent regarding recreation. And I just wondered if the air conditioning units that were going into the rec centers have actually been completely installed?
They have.
Yes, thank you very much for the question. Carl Ray Johnson is completely installed. It is up and running 100%. And they should finish South Side Recreation Center this week.
Great, great. Because I know we were getting a lot of feedback about the heat that was in those places when, you know, they tried to have activities. So thank you so much.
No, thank you. It's gonna be a blessing to have it in there. Absolutely.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Mayor?
Yes. Tina?
I do need some direction moving forward so that we set up a budget to you. I know you heard Diane make the request to carry over her $200,000 in savings for next year. That will impact their contract. We will have a new contract amount moving forward if that's the case. There currently is a, for lack of a better term, clawback provision in their contract where if they have savings that they have to remit it back to the city because it's only to be used for the, the hot obligations that we're allowed to use it for. So if we're going to do that, then I will bring that back in the contract as well as the budget. And we can do that as well. We need to discuss Civic Events and how we want to move forward with their budget. I know Carl has already cut $92,000 out of his civic events budget just based on what he expects for revenue shortfalls from the venues. I know he's also working to cut any expenditures that he can in addition to that. So what I would propose is that we bring back those two items after discussions with Diane and Carl as far as what we're going to project for next year's budget. And any shortfalls, I think that Diane will be able to shore up with her savings from this year, and I'll let her answer to that in just a moment. And I think that any shortfalls in Civic Events that after Carl cuts everything that he possibly can, that we would just absorb that through the Civic Events fund balance for next year. Hope that we're being too conservative and maybe see better results in the coming months.
I would like for us not to be dipping into the fund balance right now. I think we just need to be conservative and watch out where we can save money and not because it won't produce a positive result backwards. So be very conservative and not tap into fund balance right now.
This would not be the hotel tax fund balance. It would be the Civic Events fund balance. It's because of program income as well. As far as the current year, we are projecting, of course, what I showed you, the shortfall of $200,000. All of those obligations, most of them are contractual obligations, and we cannot not them unless we change the contract for the current year. And so that $200,000, I don't believe we'll be able to shore up unless we see better results than what we're expecting. And so I need some direction on how we want to address the current year's shortfall.
Okay, so I thought we said we didn't need to take action. So I was wrong in that. So this was just to be a discussion. And so I think what we'll do for the next meeting is have a more specific presentation that we'll take action on. Okay. All right. Tommy?
Mayor, Tommy Hebert, single member District One. Just as, just as one member of the council, my, my preference is staff knows far better, at least than I, as, as one council member, where the places would, would, would best stand any reductions or decreases. If possible, I would like for the staff to make some recommendations to us. This will have the least impact on the budget if we do this and bring forward some recommendations since they know far better the, the, the daily ins and outs of the budgets. That's my preference.
Well, I think that's what we'll do at the next meeting. So today, we're just open discussion about it, and we'll get a lot more specific and detailed at our first meeting in June.
Good. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. So we'll move forward. We have some direction, Tina, and we'll look forward to more detailed information at the next meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for being available today for this meeting. All right, we'll move on to item B, which is an update on financial performance for the Texas Bank Sports Complex. And Tina, you're on as well with Carl and maybe Brent. So I'm not sure who's all on for this one, but let's go.
Yes, ma'am. This is a discussion on the performance of the Texas Bank Sports Complex. My part of the presentation, I'm simply presenting you the financials and letting you know where they stand financially. You'll see that they do have some program revenue that is composed of things like athletic programs, concessions, rentals, advertising revenue, all those sorts of things. They also have a general fund transfer of approximately $700,000 per year. And then they have the hotel occupancy tax transfer of $50,000. Their expenditures for parks maintenance is, their budget is about $850,000. They have a capital budget of $300,000, as well as program expenditures of $300,000. So if anyone has any questions on that, I will be happy to try to answer them. And if not, then we'll move on to Carl's portion of the presentation.
On the program revenue, how much of the program revenue is driven by teams coming into San Angelo versus local teams using the facility?
I would let Carl or Brent for that question.
It, it's a combination. And Brent, do you, do you have a good idea how that's broken down?
Good morning again. Carl's correct. It is, I'm sorry. I'm not there.
You're there. We can see you.
All right. Carl's exactly correct. It is a combination. The majority of that revenue that she's talking about there is from local teams. There is some when they come in and they pay gate fees or something like that for different tournaments. But the majority of it is for local teams that just play at the complex for, for the revenue for the program.
So with that, we wouldn't be receiving a lot of hotel tax dollars or expenditures in restaurants because it is all local.
You, for the majority of that, no. Some of it, yes, because some of it is for the, the gate fees and for tournament entry fees and things like that, that we hold tournaments out there. But the majority of it, I would say, was probably be for the local team just now. So some of it, I mean, I would have to look it up to get you the definite number. I wouldn't want to give you a number off the top of my head.
And, and as far as the teams from out of town, we have a slide coming up that talks about the economic impact.
Yes, but the economic impact is based off of hotel rooms and eating. And so if you're standing, the majority of it is local, you're not getting the economic impact of hotel rooms and food.
That's correct.
So you can show this, but it's not really the right numbers. It's not really impacting in the way that you're presenting this because you just said that in fact, your hotel is locally driven, not out of town driven.
If I may, Mayor, this is Rick. Those first slides really focus on the fact that the, the programming that recreation does in-house is primarily their source of generating revenue. So they run a lot of local programs there. When we have, we have tournaments that come in from out of town, those are typically done by another entity who's running those, those programs. So while we get a little rental fee off of it, we're not actually running the program. Someone else is making the majority of the revenue off of that, that tournament. Where we win is that when those tournaments come to town, we get sales tax revenue, hotel rooms, and those kind of things. So we really, we're really focusing on it in two different areas. One, how we meet those local needs, whereas where Brent gets most of his additional revenue that he actually sees because he's actually running the program. And then those where we rent out the complex for a large tournament, someone else is getting the proceeds from the gate and those kind of things primarily, but we're seeing the sales tax. So two different items kind of they were looking at, and that's why it's broken out in the two different ways as well.
Okay, so I'm sure someone's keeping track of how all that revenue breaks down.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And what, what Tina showed in the last slide talks about the sports complex itself, its budget in terms of all its revenue and all its expenditures. The sports complex also is an economic impact generator, and that's the other slide. So it's not direct, direct revenue to the sports complex program budget. It's indirect income to the city. So this slide compares the last few fiscal years, the general fund allocation versus the, the economic impact, our estimation. And we've, we have always, since we've started the complex and tournaments at the complex since 2009, have looked to the CVB and their formula, how to calculate that. In the past, it was less conservative. When Diane came a few years ago, she gave us a new formula to work with, and it's, it's more conservative. And we, I believe it is very much more realistic. So we're, we're very confident in these economic impact estimations. And so the previous slide compares the general fund allocation to the sports complex budget versus our estimated economic impact. When the complex was built back in 2009, 2008, it, it primarily was to be an economic impact generator, and it also was to help consolidate a few leagues that were active, the Girls Fast Pitch Association, Southern Little League, as well as recreation's own programs and leagues, and was built to also accommodate additional tournaments. So in the past, the economic impact was generated, that was likely double what you see these figures here. We did not feel confident those were realistic. We, we do now feel confident these estimations are much more realistic.
So how many tournaments do we usually have a year?
It varies. Brent, can you answer?
Yes. It's been going up a little bit, but we have had a lot rain, a lot of rainouts here the past few years, especially for the May tournament. I think the past three years, the May tournament has ran out with RTRSA youth baseball. But we can average anywhere, depending on how many smaller tournaments want to come. For large tournaments, we're averaging somewhere between eight and 11 a year.
Okay, thank you. So we're saying through these eight to 11 tournaments a year, those eight to 11 tournaments a year produce this economic impact of seven, of a million seven through just eight to 11 tournaments?
Yes, ma'am. But they're, they're all different numbers. I mean, I've, I've talked to you about some of the, some of the ones that we've had, where we've had 100-plus teams, and then some of them are much, much smaller than that.
Sure. Sure. And I know last year, May, you had a couple really big ones planned, and that's when we got the wonderful rainfall.
Yes, ma'am. And for 19, that took a, a huge hit because they were, they were both expected to be over 100 teams, which would have been about 400,000 to half a million estimated economic impact per tournament. So.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
Mayor, I've got a question. This is Wayne.
Go ahead.
I know I've asked this question in one of our previous meetings, but pertaining to the rainouts for the tournaments. And I know our biggest concern is probably the infield. And the, the coverings that we can probably purchase to prevent that, if we do have a substantial rain, we can have those covered. And during the, on a Saturday, if it, if it rains on a Friday night, a couple inches, and Saturday morning, it's a sunny day, we remove those, those covers, and they can proceed with the tournaments. To prevent 100 teams missing out on having a tournament because of a rainout on a, on a Friday evening or even on a Saturday evening to follow up on a Sunday championship game, I, in my opinion, I think we need to look at all those preventative measures to be able to proceed with these tournaments in any way possible. Brent, is that something we can look at? Or Carl, can we price anything like that? anything like that? Because I think it would be an investment for that complex to be able to do this.
Yeah, I, I think it's definitely something that we can look into. I know you brought it up before and we have talked about it. One of the problems is the amount of people that it takes to handle those covers and then also storing those covers and along with purchasing those covers. We just don't have the amount of people out there all the time right before it rains. We do work extremely hard with the park staff that maintain the fields out there. Like the February tournament that we had just a couple of months ago, it rained a couple of days before that. We were on the urge of canceling that tournament, but we were able to get some extra staff out there and do some work to those fields, get the dirt turned over and into the little bit and get it dried out. And it ended up being a great tournament with a huge amount of teams. I think we ended up with 117 coming. So to San Angelo, so the covers, they're an option. You know, if the ideal thing would be to have artificial turf out there as a lot of other places are going to, but that's just not in our, in our budget, obviously, but you know, it would help to have that as well. So there's many different options that we can look at into the future. But we're, we're doing the best we can with what we have, sir.
I understand there's, yeah, it takes a lot of staff to remove those covers, but until we can get up to that point, I could almost guarantee like these coaches are so dead set on having their, their kids out there and to participate in these tournaments. I know a couple of them personally that I bet they would be willing to help out, remove those covers just to get their kids onto the field in a timely manner. If we, we let them.
Volunteer in to be out there with them?
I will.
Okay. There you go.
And I agree with you. If they're there right before the weather's coming. You know, a lot of the teams that come to the larger tournaments that we're talking about, yes, we do have tons that are local as well, but some of them aren't even here yet. You know, when the weather's here a day or two before and depends on how much rain we get on whether we have to, to cancel or work a little extra on those fields to get them ready to go. Our ultimate goal is to get them ready to go no matter what. I mean, it has to be safe for the kids. I mean, safe for when they take the field to play. So it's definitely something that we can get with Roger and Parks and, and look at and Carl and look at again, but.
Yes, we, we can revisit this and develop an assessment of what it would take.
I got one more question for you, Brent. When can we, or can we already start getting large tournaments back out there? Do we have a?
Well, it was based off of Governor Abbott's executive orders. So their ability to do it is all dependent on when he allows that, those activities to take place. And I believe on Monday, he allowed tournaments, but you don't get to have an audience. So the players can come, but you can't have people sitting there watching it. So on whether people are willing to do that right now or travel.
So we're anticipating the complex opening back up for practices June 1st, and then the leagues may participate June 15th for youth leagues is what he said yesterday as well. So that's what we're looking at, getting it going as, and then hopefully we can get some more tournaments out there. Unfortunately, most of our tournaments are February, April, May timeframe that are the larger ones. We do have, I believe, San Angelo Girl Fast Pitch Association is planning their Midnight Madness, which I'm not sure how many teams they'll have this year, but I believe that's still on for July. They did have the other one for scheduled for June, I believe it was, and that's, that's a no-go because the league was canceled. But we'll definitely look into it. People are eager to play. We understand that. We want them out there playing. So as soon as we get the, the all clear to go, we'll, we'll get what we can out there.
Well, the hard part is not knowing when Governor Abbott is specifically going to open up the doors. So many of these leagues are pretty hard to start having a conversation with and when we don't know what the timeframe is. And so you're kind of in a bad position in terms of knowing what you can or cannot do right now, Brent. So we, we realize that. Or it's depending on Governor Abbott's executive orders. So we've got to live with that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions for Brent on the Texas Bank Sports Complex? Are there more slides?
No, ma'am. This was the final slide for this presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much, Brent and Carl.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item C. First public hearing and introduction of an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019 and ending September 30th, 2020 for grants and capital items.
Thank you, Mayor.
I believe you're on again. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So this first budget amendment is related to the Texas Department of State Health Services grant and the amount of $250,000. That will go to help fund things like salaries, PPE, all those types of things within the health department. The next question.
Go back to that one. When you bring up salaries, so what additional salaries other than what's already in terms of employees that we have the budget for those employees? So.
There, there are no additional salaries being budgeted. This will just help the general fund absorb some of the cost of salaries of operating the health department.
Hey, Tina, if I could chime in. This is Rick. This is a, a great opportunity that Sandra was able to take advantage of in that the state offered some assistance. So she was able to capture those grant dollars. And it's a one-time, one-year thing that she was able to then apply toward existing salaries of staff who were being funded partially through the general fund. So this one-time opportunity that she was able to take advantage of will help the city in the upcoming budget with reducing revenue expenses or expenses to the general fund through this grant. So next year, I mean, the following year, while the city may have to re-take up the responsibility of those, this was an opportunity to help for this one year with no expense to the city.
Thank you, Rick. So I think that's a very important conversation for the public to hear. So I appreciate you chiming in and offering those additional comments.
This next budget amendment is for fire aerial apparatus. In layman's term, that is a ladder truck for the fire department. They have found an opportunity.
Put fire truck with ladder instead of fire aerial apparatus? It's a fire truck. It has a ladder.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. That's the easier way to say it.
Yes.
So they are requesting to use, they, you'll recall that in Fund 502, our capital replacement fund, that they are allocated $250,000 every year and Chief Dunn usually tries to save that up for a couple of years in order to buy fire trucks as they are needed. They have found a significant discount on a ladder truck that they are able to purchase currently, and it's on a first come, first served basis. So they are requesting to use FY21's $250,000 allocation in order to purchase this truck while it's available. And that agenda item, I think, is coming up right after this budget amendment for further discussion.
So basically what we are requesting is that we take money that would be in the fiscal year 21 budget and move it forward so we can take advantage of this demo fire truck, purchase it now.
Yes, ma'am. And then of course, that would be reimbursed back to the general fund in the FY21 budget.
Okay.
Next up is the bond issue. Of course, you're very familiar with this. This is for the street improvements, both citywide as well as at the airport entrance. And so we're just budgeting for that revenue as well as the expenditures related to it. Next up is Lake Nazareth improvements. You'll recall that the ballot said that the balance in that fund on May 5th of 2020 is what would be allocated for Lake Nazareth improvements in an amount not to exceed $6 million as well as the water reclamation improvements. In other words, the sewer system near the, the lake in the amount of almost $11.5 million. And that's all I have on this budget amendment for today, Mayor.
Do I have questions from council? Okay. So if not, do I have a motion to accept the budget amendments as presented?
Harry Thomas, single member District 3, I move to approve the budget amendments.
Thank you. And I second please.
Mayor Tommy Hebert, single member District 1, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Thank you. With no public comment, we will take a vote. So all in favor, please say aye or raise your hand so I understand the approval. One, two.
Aye.
Three, four, five, six, seven. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. We'll move into item D. Consider awarding the purchase of a new aerial apparatus. In other words, a fire truck with the ladder to replace a 25-year-old ladder truck or a aerial apparatus old truck from Sidens Martin Emergency Group LLC through HGAC contract number FS12-19 in the amount of $697,195.19 and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Chief Patrick Brody, are you on? You're on.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Thank you. Let me share my screen real quick.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. Okay. So the fire department is requesting the replacement of a 25-year-old ladder truck. You're welcome, Mayor, with a demo unit. We are scheduled, we are originally scheduled to replace this unit in October with budgeted funds. Tina kind of already went over this. We have the opportunity to purchase this unit for about $200,000 below the retail cost. And we have about approximately $552,000 set aside. And again, we are requesting an advance on next year's capital improvement budget of the $250,000. This vendor has agreed to hold this unit for us temporarily, but they cannot hold it until October. And again, it is on a first come, first served basis. We are just asking for the advance on the capital improvement allocation for fiscal year 21, and it'll be reimbursed.
Would you please tell the council about why this is needed, why we need to move now instead of later in terms of please talk through the current fire engine, the fire truck with the ladder that you have some mechanical problems that it did not prove, it was not approved by inspection in terms of ability to service this community. So would you talk through that, Patrick?
Yes, ma'am. Great question. Well, let me move my screen. Okay, there we go. So the, our current ladder truck, this is a ladder seven. It's a 1995 with 350,000 miles on it and 10,000 engine hours. And we had this truck tested, non-destructive tested. That's basically what third-party agency comes in. They test water flow. They test hydraulic system. They also test the load carrying capacity of the ladder. And unfortunately, we had some catastrophic failures of this truck. The waterway failed the flow test. We had multiple hydraulic system leaks. The transmission was having issues. And the mechanic also noted that we have excessive engine hours. And his recommendation was an in-frame engine overhaul, which as y'all can imagine is fairly expensive. So I've received several quotes from a mechanic to remedy the, the situations. Engine overhaul, $35,000. Transmission overhaul, $19,000. And the ladder tower repairs, $24,000. And that also included some of those hydraulic repairs. $78,000 in repairs. And let's not forget, this is for a 25-year-old ladder truck. And at the end of the day, we won't get any more than two to three more, realistically, five more years out of this vehicle in the event that those repairs are made. NFPA, that's the National Fire Protection Association, they've actually got a clause in there. Annex D states that any apparatus over 25 years old should be retired from service. And this vehicle certainly falls into that category. So we actually priced this unit, this new demo unit for them to build it from ground up right now, and it would cost $898,000 approximately. And then the, the cost of this demo unit is $697,000. That is a huge saving for the city. And $201,000 savings for the city. And this, the important thing about, but rarely do they actually fit into our aerial apparatus specifications. We have certain things that do fit into our city's needs, and this vehicle actually meets those needs. So it's a great opportunity for us to pick this up at a huge discount. And again, that's my, our recommendations is to move funds this year or next year's funds into this year's account so we can take advantage of this now, so we don't miss out on this opportunity. Any more questions?
Thank you, Patrick. Let me see if council has any comments or questions for you, but certainly we need a fire truck, a fire truck with a ladder that works and is efficient. And I would just ask two things. Number one, I believe strongly we need to do as the request is, is to purchase that and move those funds forward. The next question I have is, does it make sense to spend the $78,000 on the old truck to have a backup? Should it ever be needed? Or will we in fact try to sell the old truck, the 1995 truck in an auction? Or what are we going to do with the old truck? And what value does it have to anybody else? Or does it have more value if we spend the $78,000 and have it as a backup?
Yes, ma'am. Good question. I've been thinking about this a lot over the last couple of months, and I would actually not recommend repairing this vehicle because even after those repairs are made, everything on that vehicle has 350,000 miles on it. So yes, we'll repair the engine. Yes, we'll repair the transmission and get the waterway squared away. But at the end of the day, the suspension has 300,000 miles on it. The body has 300,000 miles on it. What's next? The hydraulic system, the lifting capabilities on the ladder? And that is a huge, huge, huge expense when we talk about having to refurb and replace that ladder truck, the ladder on the truck. My recommendation is to move forward, put it up for auction, try to cut our losses on it, try to eliminate any future repair needs. And again, it's 25 years old. I can't see us getting much more, if, if all the way up to five years even with the repairs. And with the, with the replacement of this vehicle, this ladder, that'll give us two frontline aerial apparatus, one on the south side and then one located centrally at Central Fire Station.
Okay. Questions from council? Billy?
Yes. Patrick, what's the age of the demo truck?
It's a nine, it's a 2019. Almost started with 1995. It's a 2019, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
It's practically brand new and basically this vehicle drives around the country so they can sell it, correct? And I questioned how many miles it has on it, and I was actually very surprised. 3,000 miles is all it has. It's not even broken in yet.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments of council? If not, may I have a motion to approve the purchase moving forward the budget from '21 into '20 to purchase this fire truck with a ladder?
Billy Dewitt, single member District 6. I make the motion that we move the money into the current budget so we can purchase the ladder fire truck.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lane, thank you. No public comment. We'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand, please.
Aye.
We have a motion, a second, and a seven to zero vote. Purchase the demo.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll, I'll go buy the fire truck. Y'all have a nice day. Thank you.
Fire truck with a ladder.
With the ladder, correct.
Okay. Item E is consider awarding RFBE S-02-2020 Annual Seal Coat Project to Ronald R. Wattner Company in the amount of $3,898,415.61 and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Lance, you're on.
Morning, Council. Lance Silver Street, Engineering Services. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you guys so that we can go through this presentation. And I believe you guys should be able to see it now.
We can.
So as you guys recall, just to give you a quick update.
See your screen.
There we go. Technology at its best. All right. So as you guys recall, annually, we have a seal coat program. And so we have actually set up so where every eight years, every city, street has a maintenance operation that we perform on it. As you guys recall from presentations in the past, the, the primary reason that we do this is to kind of help get the most life we can out of all of those streets. It does not, the seal. It does not, the seal coat program does not really necessarily improve ride quality. What it does is it performs a maintenance layer to seal in all the oils and aggregate that's on those roadways, so that way we can prevent that degradation on the long term. And so it is that time of year that we are moving ahead to do that annual maintenance program. We have actually been looking at some other alternatives to the seal coat. As you guys have a recall, having approved, we've done an HA5 project, and we're actually looking at a Gilsonite product this year, as also testing it out and seeing just different technologies that are out there that give a better ride quality. And so we are moving ahead with that. One thing that we have to recall is a lot of our streets are at the condition where it's beyond the use of that HA5 or beyond the use of those Gilsonite products. And so seal coat is still going to be the, really the best option for us on a lot of those instances. And so this year, what is being proposed is we're looking at approximately 1.2 million square yards of seal coat. The contract price is roughly about $3.9 million. That price of the 3.17 per square yard is a little higher than we have seen it in the past. You know, we've had a lot of up and downs as far as the, the oil prices. And the contractor has quoted this price, you know, not really knowing what the forecast is going to be in terms of the oil prices by the time that the product is installed. And so we are requesting that you guys approve it and move ahead with this product. Largely because there's a lot of that product that has to be purchased ahead of time, brought to the city, stockpiled and prepared. We are going to see a small amount of savings in that we have some stop, some rock left over from last year's seal coat project that we're going to reuse. And so there will be some savings overall for us on this project using that rock from last year. We are recommending that it be awarded to Wagner, and Wagner has done very well for the city in the past. They come in and within a couple of weeks, pretty much, you know, have the entire project done and out of the way. They bring in multiple crews, multiple machines, and they really get after it when they do the product. This is an overview of the map of the areas that we're proposing and which districts will have that seal coat product put in. And we also too have a few slides that kind of blow those areas up to show a little bit better. We're going to be up in SMD2 and SMD4 around Goliad and the Old Lincoln Middle School and Lakeview High School. We're also going to be near the rodeo fairgrounds as well in SMD2. We are going to be doing some stuff around the parking lots of the El Paso and SMD3. And also too, we are looking at doing two-course treatment on 11th Street. As you guys recall, that is currently largely dirt and, or cleechy based. And so we're going to actually be putting a two-course treatment on that, along with some joint venture on another project to redo some stuff around the Windland Manufacturing. And then we also too have Ben Ficklin Road in SMD1 that's being proposed for that area there. Alternates, we have SMD3 and SMD4 around Baptist Memorial and just north of the Houston Hard Expressway. And then alternate four is going to be over near Bell L Elementary, which is just south of the Conshul River and south of the Sports Complex. And so what we're recommending today is approval to Ronald Wagner and Company for that roughly 3.9 million. And they have performed very well for us in the past four years prior to this as well. And so if there's any questions, I would like to answer those questions now.
Lance, the first question I have is, you have presented in past city council meetings some alternatives to seal coating. And we, I think, have been very pleased with those new processes. So the question is, with the information you presented today, why are we going back to the traditional seal coat instead of some of the new processes that have been used?
Sure, we, we a few years ago had a study done of all the streets in the city. And they actually went through and they rated what they call a pavement index score for all of the streets. And it's called a PCI score. And for a lot of these newer technologies, they are not as forgiving on streets that have low scores. And so for instance, the HA5 product, that score has to be, you know, well above a 70 score to be able to put that product on and for them to guarantee it. A lot of our, I would say 90% of our streets score below that. And so they're not eligible for like the HA5 product. This year, we're hoping to bring to you a little bit later another product. It's a Gilsonite product called friction seal. And that product has a little bit more flexibility on the, the type of roadway it can go on. It does give us a little bit more flexibility in that. The problem is, is we have never installed that product yet, and we would like to put that on a couple of roads and see how that performs. Now, one thing that we do have the ability to do, and we are doing it this year, is we are actually taking a roadway that was seal coated recently and actually applying that HA5 product on it, just to see how it bonds, how it performs. And it may be now that we are getting into the, the eight-year plan, it may be that as we put that seal coat on and raise that pavement score index on some of these streets, it may be eligible for these newer products in the future. Unfortunately, right now, a lot of those newer products, just the streets are in such condition, it is not eligible right now to be considered for those newer products.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is certainly, one minute, Billy, and then I'll, I'll put you up next, okay? Is we talked, you know, we know that gas prices, oil prices are at a historic low. So when we're quoted 317 per whatever that per is, square foot perhaps, what is that relative to in terms of oil price? Because we know today it's very low, and so the question mark is, if it's more expensive than it has been, why is that?
We, we don't really know, as you guys well know, that a lot of these are sealed bid proposals, so we don't really have a lot of communication with the contractor. We did note in the contract that we thought the price of the oil was a little bit higher than we anticipated because of the current prices. But we also know that that price basically dropped over a two-month period. And so it, it could very well go back up, and is already seen nationwide that those prices are raising again. And so the contractor, if he were to bid that lower price, and then all of a sudden not be able to, to execute the contract, it, it would be catastrophic for us in terms of scheduling, as well as the, him having to cancel that bid. And so the only thing that we are thinking is that he may be using a, you know, the last year average, just to know, just to make sure that he can cover his costs. We really don't know why. We, we did expect that low price on the oil to be a little bit less. It wasn't, and so we, we really don't have the information as to why it wasn't.
So when he breaks down the bid, in terms of coming up with a total number, that bid is not broken down to give the various line items that accumulate up to the total number, meaning number of gallons of, of the oil times x dollar?
No, he actually does quote that specifically, so that we have a price of what is being charged for the rock, we have a price of the oil, we have his Mobe cost, things like that. And the, the biggest outlier was the, the oil cost was more than we had anticipated and have seen in the past. Again, we anticipated it'd be lower because of the prices we're seeing. But if you look at the six-month average on those oil prices, it is really not as low as what we are experiencing right now over the last month or two. And so, you know, the, as a contractor, you, you hope for the best, but you can't really rely on the current market. You kind of have to look at what that trend is over the last year to see to it that you can cover your costs.
Okay, Billy, you had a question?
Yes, just two quick questions. Lance, the first question, on your slides where it had alternate and different districts or timing. Wonder what alternate means? And also, is there nothing scheduled for District Six?
I actually believe, Billy, that there was, SMD6 is scheduled. And let me go through and find that slide. It looks like they did not include a map. They did say that SMD6 was included. I'd have to go back through and, and check on the maps to see exactly which one that is, Mr. Witt. As far as the alternates, oftentimes what we do is we have a, a base area for the bid, which means at a minimum, this is what we need to accomplish. And so we have a base bid, and then after that, we end up having alternates of other areas that we would like to be able to see in, in that project if the funds are available. And so in this particular instance, everything that said alternate are items that we feel that we can cover with the current funds. And, and so that's how we bid those contracts most often.
So you have like primary and secondary? So the ones that didn't have alternate would be priority? And if there's some opportunity left over, you would do the alternates?
That, that is correct.
Okay, alright. Okay, so could you, Lance, maybe send me an email for what's scheduled for District Six?
Yes ma'am, I can actually do that.
Thank you. That's all I have, mayor.
Lucy, you're on, and then Tom, Thompson, I'll have you after Lucy, okay?
Okay, Lance, when are we supposed to start this seal coating project?
The, the seal coat project is actually better done during the hotter months. We, we have a seal coat season that kind of starts around the May timeframe and ends in September. Wagner schedules their crews, and so it'll be sometime in that May to September. Once it's awarded, we'll actually have a firm schedule from him of when we will be in that rotation. And usually Wagner comes in and they're done within two to three weeks. And so it's a pretty, pretty fast process for them. They do do some other areas in Midland, Odessa, and other areas. So oftentimes we get on the schedule, and it really depends on when the rock is available and when they can kind of optimize their schedule as they're coming through the area. And so, but it will be in that May to, to September 1st timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
Lance, I think Lucy covered a part of mine, just the schedule list, trying to get the schools and the stock show grounds and all those covered prior to October school, which is great. I think you've got that handled. You know, I'm not buying the oil part on it, you know, if those people are looking at an average of the past six months, I don't buy that. I think if you've got multiple sealed bids there, you and Shane can look at that. And you just said you get a rock cost, an oil cost, and a load cost. I mean, I don't see any huge jump in oil over the next six months, eight months, nine months. If there's an avenue to go save a couple hundred thousand here, I'm certainly for it. But yeah, I was kind of like going with the mayor. I, I think some of those costs, they shouldn't be using a six-month's average from the past. And I know this may be a little touchy here, but you know, it's, we, I'm looking at leases and things that they're trying to buy those leases not to do production for the next two years. So I just think there's some things there you could pursue, nothing major, just throwing my little comment in.
Sure. And, and just so you know, in this case, we actually only had one bidder for, for the project this year, and it was Wagner.
Okay.
That becomes part of the issue. Certainly, we don't have competitive issues on this at this point. But I think we need to be very well aware, we're all well aware, that oil prices are down and that there's a surplus of oil. There is a major surplus of oil, which should dictate lower prices. Because surplus, demand, supply and demand is always the driver of pricing.
Well, and we would hope that, you know, they're not using West Texas Intermediate, the quality of oil here to do this road, but I get it. And if we've only got one bidder, that to me always seems a problem. We run into that with a lot of our projects. We just have a single bidder, and sometimes I wonder why. But anyway, you told me what I need to know. Thanks, Lance.
With that, do I have, do I have another question from, okay, Harry, I see your hand.
Yes. Harry Thomas, Single Member District Three, I think you just make a comment. I, I kind of go along with everybody else that's spoken so far about the price of oil. Daniel's the one that's going to negotiate this contract. I think he should, he should actually ask that question. I, I mean, I know we're going to get started in this in the next 60, 90 days. But the bottom line is, is as we, we take a look at this, we should be looking at every penny right now as, as we go forward, because we know all the sales tax is going to be down and it's going to impact everything. So as Daniel, as you're having conversations with, with Wagner on this, I certainly would, would not be opposed to you having, asking that question and find out if there's a better oil price. Thank you.
Shane, do you want to offer anything? You're on the screen, so your comments are always appreciated.
Yes ma'am, I was just going to, when Councilwoman DeWitt was asking about Single Member District Six, we did have an alternate in Single Member District Six that we actually put in the bid packet. As the, as we got our prices back, that, we just had to, we had to eliminate something within that budget because the, the overall, when we took all alternates, it was not within our current budget, budgeted dollars that we had. One, and two, it actually, your Single Member District actually, where we have that lined up, actually lines up in, in next year's seal coat a lot better than it does in this year's seal coat project. As the majority of the seal coat that we're looking at next year will be in Single Member District One and Six, kind of in the Southland, in the, in the Lake Nasa where the area is. So when we look at, look at that, it actually lines up better into next year's projects than it actually did this year. And two, it allowed us to trim our budget back to where we could actually keep it, keep everything within our existing budget that we had without having to reach out and, and extend into other funds. So with that, answer that question as well. I think another thing that we have to look at in the oil prices as well, we do know they're, they're high. But again, the oils that we're using, these are, these are blends of oil that have probably been made with, made prior to, with some older pricing in the oils as these, as these emulsions are being made. So again, we do believe that there are, we should have seen some savings within, within the bid. Why we didn't, we're not sure yet. But as Councilman Thomas said, as we start moving into negotiations with Wagner, we, we will be talking about those oil prices and also be looking at, definitely looking very closely at application rates when we're putting it down, because that would make a significant difference as well as, as in the cost with that. So we believe that we can, we believe that watching everything really close, that we can pinch as many pennies as we can.
We certainly do not want to stop working on our speed. So infrastructure is hugely important. So wherever we can save some dollars to extend the amount of streets that we can do is certainly important. But with that, I would entertain a motion to approve this dollar amount with the idea that we would continue to work to bring the dollars down and have the ability to maybe extend the amount of street work that can be done on this program. So could I have a motion? Yes, Billy?
Ma'am, before we go there, I just guess I have a, a question. Because if we're looking at alternate streets that we can do the seal coating on, why couldn't, and I guess this is Shane or Lance, why couldn't some work be, an alternate be in District Six?
Again, it, it, when we looked at the area and the distribution of all the different areas within the alternates, we actually looked at how, again, it's, it's where they line up in town. And so most everything with the base bids and all of that are up on the northeastern side of town this year, where our base bids were. And so to keep everything concentrated in that area works, works a lot better. And so when we're, it, it works a lot better there. And as we move into next year's seal coat, again, in Single Member District Six in your area, that's when it really lines up, because we'll be doing a lot more work in your area already. And so when we looked at the budget amount and where we needed to be and not be, it, it just really lined up better this year to take the alternate through alternates one through four, exclude alternate five, which was your area, and we'll line that up and with all of your area next year when we move into the seal coat process.
Shane, thank you.
With mobilizations.
Okay, I, I just appreciate that explanation, because I know I will get some calls about why District Six is, you know, being ignored or neglected or whatever. So thank you for sharing that.
And also too, also too, Billy, I will, I will add to it that we have the seal coat plan. And that seal coat plan oftentimes tries to optimize some of the efficiency and the movement of that material, so that we can kind of basically have a, have less numbers of, of sites where we're stockpiling things, less movement around the town with that stockpile and those oils. And so on that seal coat plan, it does not necessarily mean that every district is going to have a, a project or a seal coat in their district every year. But over the eight-year period, every street will be done. And so there will be some times when we have a district that has more, sometimes we have a district that's less. And sometimes a district may not have anything that year. It doesn't mean that we're not going to get to it still in that eight-year plan. It's just the efficiency of moving that equipment and those materials around within the city.
Alright, thank you. It makes plenty good sense. I appreciate that.
With that, do I have a motion?
Mayor Tommy Hebert, Single Member District One, I, I move approval of staff recommendation.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Harry Thomas, Single Member Three, I second that motion.
Thank you, Harry. No public comment, we'll take a vote, all in favor of awarding RFBE S dash O two dash two O and the amount of three million eight hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-one cents say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven zero. We will now move into closed session. The executive session under the provision of Government Code Title Five, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under The Following Sections. A 551.071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding One Amendment To The SAIPAC Agreement. And so with that, we will go into closed session. And so that's what we're doing.
Okay, I think we're all back on. All right, so we are coming out of the closed session. So first item is 8A, consider items discussed in closed session. There are no announcements to be made based off of the closed session meeting. So we will move into item B, discussion of upcoming meetings July through September. Independence Day and Labor Day.
Yes, this is just an item to clarify if everyone will be available for the Tuesday, July 7th meeting. And we do have for July, the 4th of July, it's a Saturday prior to that Tuesday meeting. And so July 7th and the 21st would be our regular meetings. And then with the budget workshop occurring on July the 14th. So that would be three consecutive July meetings. Just wanted to make sure that everyone's available for those. And we will have a forum so that we can let the planning department know.
We need to be, we need to do the July 7th meeting.
Okay, I'm not seeing anyone in opposition. And then just a reminder for August, we'll have meetings on the 4th and 18th with a budget workshop on August 11th.
That's fine.
It works. I think we've all got that on our calendars.
Okay, all right, with that, we will move into 9, the adjournments. So may I please have a motion for adjournment?
Mayor Tommy Hebert, single member District 1, move adjourn.
Thank you. Second by Tom Thompson. And what we will do is take a vote. Raise your hand and say hi.
Hi.
Three, four, five, hi. Seven, zero, bye.